From the fire department. Uh, we did have a report they submitted. It's it. It was in the on the website. But next up, we have the Honolulu Police Department, uh, District One, and I see Lieutenant Sagucio. Did I say that correctly this time?
Segucio.
Segucio. Goodness, I've been practicing. I I I'm terrible. I'm sorry.
There's a G. There's a G.
Uh, good evening, everyone, and aloha, Lieutenant Segucio, representing the District One Department, um, Honolulu Police Department, District One Community Air Responsibility. You know, thank you for your guys' time and patience. The information I'm going to provide to you for today is going to be the statistics for your area. If you want more information, you guys can go to the public website, www.honolulupd.org. And the statistical information for the month of, uh, July, uh, twenty twenty-three is as follows. So, uh, motor vehicle thefts were six, um, previous month was four, burglaries are zero, previous month was one. Theft was eleven, previous seven, uh, UMVs or car break-ins is one, which is down from the previous month of seven, which is a very good thing. Assaults is zero, uh, previous was one, sex assaults is one, previous to that was zero. Uh, graffiti cases for this, uh, month of July was zero, previous was one, uh, drug offenses were one for both prior months. Yeah. So I also checked, um, under the categories of robberies and catalytic converters, and there were, uh, none for both. Uh, total calls for service for your area, uh, for the month of July was six hundred and six. Previous month was six hundred and seven, so you guys did good by getting one less call. Uh, other than that, uh, there are no criminal breaches at this point in time to report. Uh, just an update, we're nearing the August twentieth date of the start of the new three thirteen patrol schedule. We're excited for the upcoming change. We just want to reassure the general public that there will be no interruptions in service during the transition. Uh, we'll also have high hopes that the new schedule will help in filling open beats and bolstering staffing. Uh, safety tip for the month of August involves credit card skimmers. These, uh, criminal trends has moved in from the mainland, and HPD has had several instances of this type. I'm asking our community members, uh, to first look at the device. Uh, if there is a skimmer at it, it it won't look factory. There will be a bulky piece attached that would be out of place. Another suggestion, uh, was would be to ask the sales representative if they have had checked their, uh, credit card readers prior to the start of your shift. Thirdly, I advise our community members to make sure that their credit cards has these features of notifications of unusual purchases, especially if the sales and purchases, um, they should occur, occur, um, out of state or actually even out of the country. Um, once that happens, um, please make notifications to the credit card company so they can stop any other purchases from occurring and then notify HPD. At this time, I'm going to yield back the rest of my time and take any questions from the board and the public attendees in regards to, um, our area.
Thank you, Lieutenant. Do we have any questions from the board? Uh, Paula?
It's not a question. It's to thank the police department for all the things they've been doing for us. Number one, number two, on Ololo, we've been seeing police on Channel forty-nine. For CP, community policing for districts, CP for two and three, which I hope we could eventually get for our board because from our Lieutenant Segucio, he knows everyone and he goes to all the meetings. So we need to have more education and we'd like to have it for our board if there is a possibility. Because I saw Puiva, I think his name is Puiva, he came on and he was on doing a magnificent job in teaching people on what to do. Millinani, I believe it was, and, um, one other area, because we need that in New Uwana for education. That's an E for education, environment, and engineering, right? So, um, I want to thank him and I want to thank the police department, if he's District One, that we want to be included in any of the parties they have, of course, but any of the education, because they have all the money and you got to remember, NSW and CP are in one group, not two groups. They work together in transparency. Number four, reminding everyone, and I missed the fire department. If you see smoke in a mountain, you call it in. Now, you don't necessarily have to call nine one one, but that would be great. You need to call it into nine one one and tell them, "Fire now." Because any smoke, especially Pacific Heights where Pat lives, we've had a lot of that. We want to stop any fires. We don't want it like on Maui. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Lieutenant, did you have a comment or?
Just one. She's invited to our next party.
There you go. Asking, yes, shall receive.
I'll buy new shoes. Okay.
Do we have any other questions from the board or the lieutenant? Uh, any questions from the community? Well, hearing none. Actually, it's short evening. Uh, thank you very much. We appreciate your time and and all your department's efforts. You guys are doing a fantastic job from all accounts. So, thank you. Oh, oh, Robert, I'm sorry. I didn't see you. Please go ahead.
Uh, thank you. Uh, good evening, Lieutenant Sagucio. Uh, thank you, Chair. Thank you, Board. Uh, I'd just like to ask, uh, if there's anything that the police can do to assist with, uh, the noise pollution that I've been bringing up every month. Uh, I know you said to contact, uh, Hawaii Disposal Service directly. Uh, I've been doing that through, uh, Councilmember Tyler Dos Santos office, and they've made numerous contacts. And we, it hasn't availed us any relief. Uh, so I have video, I have pictures. Um, they still come out early in the morning, sometimes even before five. The cans are left one or two in front of the bus stop, and, uh, it's not changing their conduct. Um, I know I did some research and, uh, Department of Health and the Police Department are in charge with enforcement. Um, so at this time, because your time is here, I'd just like to ask if you can escalate this to a concern with the Police Department, and when community business comes up, I ask the board if they can assist our community in creating a resolution, uh, for this. But, um, is there anything that you can do, or could you please go back to the Police Department and see what can be done? Uh, because Councilmember, uh, hasn't been, uh, effective, uh, they're just not responding to the request to stay within the laws. Uh, so I'm I'm kind of, uh, not sure how to proceed without asking everyone's help.
Yeah, so Robert, I think on the last meeting I had put in the, um, the chat, um, side chat over here, the, uh, email address for the contact person that, uh, is at the Honolulu disposal, yeah. So I did send officers to that location in regards to, um, monitoring the cans, and yes, the the cans were at the location, yeah. So on 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 particular mornings, my first watch officers go to that location. Um, particularly, uh, Corporal Ryan Uno goes over there and he sees the cans in the area. However, um, he gets called away to other calls, uh, early in the morning, and we we can't meet the drivers at that point in time. So, um, it falls back onto me to try to make contact. Oh, you know, I'll send another email to, um, that contact person at the Honolulu disposal in regards to that. But just realize at that time, that five o'clock hour, um, there's a lot of, um, calls for service for the freeway due to accidents, um, traffic lights out, all these other types of, um, calls. So sometimes we get called away and we can't meet up with the drivers, um, to kind of just have a one-to-one talk with those guys, yeah. Um, enforcement, um, at this point in time, I think we still need to try to make contact with that, um, you know, um, that driver and part the particular Honolulu disposal person to see if we can have some resolution in regards to that before we start issuing citations, yeah. Because who do we actually have to give it to? We have to give it to the driver, yeah, who's putting it out there. Um, but yes, I'll I'll, you know, I'll put it in a chat again, the, uh, email address, and then I'll make contact myself.
Uh, I really appreciate that. And the reason I've been going through Councilmember's office, uh, is I remember a couple of years back, I had asked, uh, I had asked you specifically, um, I I think it was theft happening in the neighborhood, um, and I remember your response is, you know, all we got to do is take pictures and and then notify the police. And so I'd like to take a, a private approach, a hands-off. So I've been going to your Councilmember's office. They haven't been responding. So I I would really appreciate it if, uh, I don't have to get personally involved with the company and have them perhaps, uh, have take something personal against me. So it's my hope that we can do this professionally without me actually intervening and and seeming like I'm a police officer. So so I'm asking those in authority to to assist. Thank you, Lieutenant Sagucio.
Yeah, absolutely. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to put my email address in the chat. Um, and then, um, I'm also going to put that person's email in the chat also. And then, um, if you could email me those photos, that'd be fantastic, and then I could possibly forward it to them. My guys, I'll have my guys also take some photos too, and then we'll try to see if we get some resolutions, because it's not just one particular area. Appreciate your, uh, patience in this.
Okay, uh, Lieutenant, I I have many phone, I'll forward that to you. I appreciate your patience in helping me with this. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there any, uh, further questions or concerns from anybody? Uh, hearing none, uh, Lieutenant, thank you very much for coming this evening and great job as always. Thank you.
No problem. You have a great night. Night, Paula.
Uh, do we have anybody from District Five? Is there an officer from District Five or a representative? Seeing none, uh, we'll move on to, uh, the Board of Water Supply. Iris Oda, I believe is here. Iris?
Yes, I am. Thank you. Oh, Paula's.
Paula's. Neighborhood Security Watch.
Oh, oh, did I miss that? I I am sorry, Paula. Uh, my, I forgive, please forgive me. Go ahead with the Neighborhood Security Watch. Sorry, Iris. Just one second. Uh, you're muted, Paula.
No offense, but as a reminder, we want everyone to be O L O. Does anyone know what that means? Be on the lookout. Now, with all these things happening on Maui, they're giving you a lot of hints as to what you could do or didn't do or should have done. And we want everyone to be aware, no matter if it's in your garage, in the street, on the highway. There's all kinds of things going on. If you see one thing you need to know, something might happen. Now, just look at Manoa recently, because District Five is not here and District One just left. Then in Manoa, there was a man with no shirt, walking around in yards. Nobody reported it. Nobody got a report. The man went across the street to a whole bunch of houses, then proceeded to go down to the next street and break into houses. The same description was given of a man in Manoa Marketplace. And three days ago, or four days ago, I forget now, he stabbed somebody. You see something suspicious, you need to call it in. If the police do not give you a report, you have a right, you have an absolute right to ask for that report and give a description to the police officer. If the police officer re says he will not give you the report, you ask to talk to his supervisor. We need to get aware and we need to look at what's going on. I don't care if it's somebody standing in front of your house and staring at you, you need to watch. Be O L O. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the board for Neighborhood Security Watch? Uh, any questions from anybody for Neighborhood Security Watch? Uh, hearing none. Uh, thank you, Paula. Thank you very much. Okay, next up is Iris again, Board of Water Supply. So Iris, please.
Hi, I'm back. Okay, so my, uh, one main break report is there was a main break on July twenty-second in eight-inch near one thirty-three Puiva Road. And I don't have the details, but I heard there was a main break last night in your neighborhood board. So I will report on that next month. I just have a general announcement. It's summer, it's for disaster preparedness. It's summertime, which means it's officially hurricane season through November thirtieth. Being prepared and having an emergency kit available for your household is essential. So residents should store at least one gallon of water per person per day, uh, person daily for at least fourteen days. So don't forget about your pets. During an emergency, stay tuned to Media Reports and subscribe to the city's hnl.info. It's a great way to receive information, bulletins by the Board of Water Supply and other emergency city agencies. So go to our boardofwatersupply.com site to get more information. Um, and then, uh, the status update of the Puiva Road project, the the Dalsette Alika area. It's the same as the previous month, so there's no change. And there's a follow-up response to the inquiry about the notice to proceed and the ordering of long-lead items for that project. So let me, sorry, let me read what, uh, see. The length of this contract is based on the work requirements of of similar, of similar past, similar past contracts. So if validated and justified delays occurred, the contractor is entitled to a contract extension beyond the three hundred and sixty-five days. So that's what I was given as a response to the question about the NTP and the three hundred and sixty-five days. Um, there's any, uh, any other questions?
Are there any questions from the board?
Yeah, hi, Iris. This is Audrey. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, sorry. So that's kind of, um, uh, answer, I mean, it's not a right answer. So originally, the NTP notice to proceed was on track for, um, October twenty twenty-three for three hundred and sixty-five days, sixty-five days. So you're saying the contractor already asked for an extension?
No, so when I, I know, I kind of wondered about that too. So that's the, the October twenty twenty-three is the anticipated start date. So if they need to do the long-lead items and thing, they're going to work it out with the contractor to change the start date to whatever needs to be done to be able to order the items, receive the items. Once they do that, then they have the three hundred and sixty-five days to do the actual construction, the actual works.
No, no, but but.
That adjustment will happen.
The three hundred and sixty-five days shouldn't change if they figure out the long-lead items, Iris. That's within the three hundred and sixty-five days.
Correct. Ideally, well, because materials are taking eighteen months to longer, you know, long, right, it's long. They may not start the NTP in October. They may start it later, depending on however they, however the discussion goes between the contractor and our staff, and they'll adjust the notice to proceed. If it's not for October and it's later, they'll start it later, and then from that point on, it's three hundred and sixty-five days for them to do the construction.
I agree, and I understand, but you guys, you guys don't even identify the long-lead item. So why are we even talking about an extension?
They're just saying, oh, I mean, I'm just saying, they saying, I guess the questions I asked them is would the project really be three hundred and sixty-five days is what you asked me, and then if the notice to proceed is given early to allow them to order, it would they be, would the project really be done in three hundred and sixty-five days? So they also responded to me as if validated and just and justified, there could be delays. If the the contractor, let's see, if validated delay or justify delays occur, contractor is entitled to a contract extension.
Correct. But as of today, it's still anticipated October twenty twenty-three, right, as of today?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
As of today, yeah. So it's, may it get changed? Yeah, okay.
Yeah, thank you.
I'll I'll let you know of the updates. Thanks.
Thank you. Um, I think Paula, didn't you have something? I'm sorry.
I just wanted to ask two questions. One is on Lower Dalsette. I'm getting information from people living there saying that no pipes were ever changed on Lower Dalsette. Is there a way you can check the contract to find out what they did do? Because a lot of them were saying, the workers were saying, "We're just changing the valves," but they didn't change the pipes. Number one. Number two, um, is there anything to do with Lower Dalsette and Puiva? Because they're so closely connected by streets, they're right next to each other. Um, is that going to be affected too with this new thing coming up on October twenty-third? I think you said, twenty twenty-three?
The possible start date, yeah.
Are those closely related to the same pipes that are already at Lower Dalsette? And number three, I lied, number three, when we were talking about the Puiva Bridge and being clogged and asking the Corps of Engineers through our Congressman Ed Case, and I brought it up and I was mistaken, or I don't know what I missed. Um, they were cleaning reservoir number two and number three, which is on the other side of Puiva. So it all got mixed together, which it shouldn't have. Now, the Puiva Bridge is on the Diamond Head side of, uh, New Uwana School. And the other side is number two and number three, which I believe is the above, um, uh, Poly Road, Old Poly Road, and coming down the side by the stream, I mean, by the, uh, Route sixty-one, which is the Poly, Poly, uh, Highway. So those two got kind of mixed up, but those are two separate entities, and I wanted to clear it up with you because they said they were just cleaning the things on the sides of the stream. But the bridge at, uh, Puiva is clogged totally with street, trees and bushes and all kinds of stuff. And we're having two more storms coming, so I hope somebody gets something done. And if it is Board of Water Supply, which I don't think it is, I think it's city and county, uh, we need some help before we get flooded out. Just to clarify, clarify what I was saying.
Okay, yeah, I'm not certain about the bridge. I think it's not our jurisdiction, but the clearing was of our, the number two and three reservoirs of the areas along the side.
Who definitely separate, who separates things.
Entities, yeah.
But both can cause flooding, anyway.
Yes, we're taking care of our side, so the bridge, I will ask, but I don't think it's ours.
No, it's, I don't believe it is, but not to mix it together, not to mix it, right?
Okay, and then I'll check on the lower, the, um, I I don't have the project map with me, but the, I'll look into the Lower Dalsette and things like that to see if, this should be, that is the Puiva Road project. It's called the Puiva Road and Dalsette Avenue, eight-inch and twelve-inch mains, and it's
Oh, so it is Dalsette.
A long Dalsette. Yeah, it is, it is.
So it's the same pipes weren't changed, same pipes.
Yeah, so it hasn't, yeah, the project hasn't started, so there is no change of pipes yet. But when you mentioned valves, I don't know, that's what confused me.
Lower Dalsette, they didn't even, the Lower Dalsette didn't even change the pipes.
If that's part of this upcoming project, then yes, it's not changed yet.
Well, then, so the other contractor got away with murder. Okay, then.
Okay.
That's texting your money.
Yeah, I'm not sure what project you're talking about. What's the Lower Dalsette Street that you think they're saying is not done? I can, I can try to look that up.
Lower Dalsette, from Poly Highway to Alika.
To Alika, okay.
Yes.
And this is an on, a recent project? You just talked to a contractor?
No, it was a couple of years ago.
Oh, years ago, okay.
Couple of years ago, but if those pipes are all contained together and there's something leaking on Lower Dalsette, which has happened over and over and over again, that might have to be reviewed too.
Okay.
I'm not an engineer, but I know that if something's leaking above and history and physics tell me water runs downhill, not uphill, so you might want to look at both.
Thank you. Okay.
Yeah, thank you. Okay.
Thank you. Are there, uh, any further, uh, questions or comments for the Board of Water Supply from anybody? Um, I will remind people that, uh, next month, we have scheduled to, uh, hear from Board of Water Supply regarding their five-year rate increase. So just so everyone knows, uh, thank you, Iris. Thank you very much for coming out. Appreciate you having, uh, coming. Okay, next up on the agenda, we have a filling of a vacancy. We have one vacancy in the Punch Bowl area.
We have two. We do have two.
Oh, I made a mistake on that then. Okay, we have two. Uh, that's sort of in the area, uh, that sort of encircles Punch Bowl. If if anyone here so would like to fill those positions, we can find out whether you actually reside in that that sub-district or not. Is there anyone here that is interested in serving in that capacity? Hearing none, uh, we will move on then. Next up, we have residents and community concerns. Uh, before we get started, let me just make a couple of, uh, sort of concerned announcement or announcements that are sort of more concerns. There on the nbtwelve.org website, there's a letter from State Senator to the Department of Agriculture regarding infestations of fire ants, these, those frogs and the coconut rhino, rhino beetles, depending on who cares to see. Uh, there is a flyer regarding a disaster recovery plan survey that the city would like everyone to take, and that the deadline is September fourth. And in light of what's happening on Maui, that's, it's probably a good thing for everyone on this committee or this board, you know, to take that survey. Um, anyway, are there any community concerns? Uh, I think Pat did, Pat, uh, we'll go to Adrian.
Um, this is a concern from my neighbors as to why there was no trash pickup on like, uh, Kaka Lane yesterday, and I couldn't find anything in the number trying to reach it. I couldn't reach anyone to find out. It's still sitting here, and our normal pickup is on Mondays. And so we don't know what changed, but the trash is stacked up and it's a lot of it. So I don't know if there's a city, whoever, representative to find out, because I couldn't find anything on the line and I couldn't reach anybody by phone. So I was asking.
Maybe our council member can follow up.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, are there, uh, any other concerns? Paula?
Can I answer that question? Yeah, Dr. Head. All you have to do is call seven six three, I mean, seven six eight three two.
Yeah, uh, I did research to find that, but I got to get a body to talk to, and I can't spend all day doing it. I'm not retired, just sitting around. So I've tried to reach that number.
You have to call, you have to call seven six three three two hundred, push one, and then push one again, two times. Then you get them. Then you get a person. Does that make sense?
Okay, yes. Yes, just I guess to get through the the voicemail, you have to, uh, press two. Are there mail, their voice system? Thank you, Paula.
Yeah, push, push, push. Pardon?
Well, we we can follow up, uh, you can follow up, maybe if, uh, council members, representatives can, um, find out some information. That's probably our best bet. Are are there any, uh, other community concerns? I know, uh, Pat wants to bring something up, so Pat, if 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 you'd like to speak now.
This is in, uh, regards to the discontinuation of Route one twenty-one.
Oh, oh, sorry, that that's actually on our agenda. I'm sorry, Pat. I thought you were going to bring up the slope.
Um, I am bringing up the slope.
Oh, is that related? I'm sorry. Um, but if it's related to us, but if it's related to Route one twenty-one, we're going to cover that, and I'll give you a chance to speak at that time, if that's okay.
So, not yet?
Yes, please. I'm sorry. I thought it was a separate issue, but if it's related to that, that's actually on our agenda, so we're going to cover that. And I'll give you an opportunity at that time. Thank you. Sorry about that misunderstanding. Are there any other community concerns any officers to bring up?
Robert. Uh, yes, sir. Yeah, uh, thank you, Chair. Thank you, Board. Uh, I'd just like to request, uh, if the board, during board business, would take a vote, if they are willing to send a letter to Hawaii Disposal Service, then I would be willing to draft the letter and forward it to Chair Smith uh, and ask that, uh, on behalf of Neighborhood Board Twelve in our community, if Hawaii Disposal Service or Oahu Disposal Service would operate uh, within the time allowed to prevent noise pollution. So if the board would take a vote and if they're willing to send a letter, asking them to operate in our community, uh, according to lawful limits, uh, I I'd be willing to draft the letter.
Um, thank you, Robert, but unfortunately, due to sunshine law issues, we have to put, to take an action like that, it has to be on our agenda. So I I'm afraid, uh, we can't take a vote on that at the, during this month. It's, we're just not allowed to. So I I know this is a continuing concern, but that's just the constraints that we have to follow.
I think we don't have a quorum either, do we?
No, you guys, you can, you do have a quorum.
But I don't, we, we, okay, I don't think we can take action on this. It has to be on our agenda. I I'm sorry, uh, Robert, we can, um, I can talk to you afterwards and we can, uh, settle on something if you want to wait till next month. That's, I'm sorry. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any last, uh, anybody else with a community concern? Hearing none, uh, we will move on to our next agenda item, which is our report from our elected officials. First up, we have, uh, the Mayor's Representative, Director Kim Ashiro. I thought she was on the meeting.
I am here.
Oh.
Yeah, she's.
Please go ahead.
I think my video is not working right, so I'm going to just turn that off and hopefully get better audio.
Uh, your audio is working fine, just so you know.
Okay, um, so first I wanted to cover the Mayor's, uh, monthly highlights. I will put a link to the full story. To the full stories, um, and the complete newsletter in the chat. So, um, first is, um, earlier this summer, the city entered into agreement with Matt Levi's security. To provide a specialized security team to enhance public safety efforts along Kohio Beach. These additional efforts combined with the continued success of the safe and sound program. Are creating a friendlier, safer and more secure Waikiki for both visitors and locals. In July, Mayor Blangiardi announced key additions to the city's cabinet leadership team. Jean Albano will join the Department of Facility Maintenance and Dita Hollyfold. Hollyfield, sorry, will join the Department of Enterprise Services, uh, both as director designates. So they are both currently on board. Uh, regarding skyline, the city is pleased to announce that, uh, the rail has seen, uh, over a hundred seventy thousand riders. During its first month of operations and with students heading back to school. Residents have even more reason, um, to try skyline, riding the skyline. On July seventeenth, Governor Josh Green signed an emergency proclamation. To combat the escalating affordable housing crisis in Hawaii. Now, a collaborative effort by the state and all four counties. Will seek to streamline the regulatory processing for the development of fifty thousand housing units. Over the next five years. And as housing costs increase, some of our neighbors are struggling more than ever to pay their rent and utility bills. To reach these households, eight community events for the rental and utility relief program or R U R P. Were held this summer along with R U R P's partners. These events were part of R U R P's temporary reopening this summer. Funded with twenty five million in state and local fiscal recovery funds. More than six hundred Oahu families applied for short term rental and utility help at these events. And R U R P has helped more than eighteen thousand Oahu families stay safely housed during and after the pandemic. Uh, you mentioned, um, Chairman Smith, that Border Water Supply will be discussing the rate increase. That was also something that. Um, I had mentioned also at last meeting, they're having sessions coming up. And a reminder that the Budget and Fiscal Services Department, Real Property Tax Division. Um, wants homeowners to know about the real property tax credit program. And the action that City Council took to increase the income limit for this program from sixty thousand to eighty thousand. This twenty thousand dollar increase allows a larger number of homeowners to apply for this credit. Um, who had previous, you know, who had incomes over the previous sixty thousand dollar limit. And I will include a link, um, where these tax credit application forms, um, are available. They're also available at Satellite City Halls. And I wanted to know that, um, applicants who filed last year. Uh, were mailed their application on or about July fourteenth. The application deadline is October second. And if you qualify the, for the credit, it will be applied to your property tax bill. Um, that, that were sent out, um, this summer. Okay, I have some follow up items, um, based on what was raised last meeting. So regarding tall trees, um, along the Milli Milli Street frontage, um, in Booth Park. On June fifteenth, the Department of Parks and Recreation Division of Urban Forestry, or DUF. Um, a supervisor inspected several city monkey pod trees inside Booth District Park along. The Milli Milli Street in Pa'oua. The DUF supervisor determined that these trees are adequately maintained. Their canopies are high and no branches appear to pose an immediate public safety concern. Maintenance is not required at this time based on his inspection. They also wanted to note that monkey pod trees were pruned in late January of twenty twenty three. Under the downtown Kalihii pruning contract. The canopies of these monkey pod trees appear to have adequate clearance from private property and power lines. The trees have been pruned in accordance with DUF pruning specs, including clearance around utility lines. Uh, they wanted to note that it is natural for trees to drop their leaves, seeds, pods, flowers, et cetera. During prevailing winds and seasonal cycles. Next item is, um, there was a request. To see the Manu Oku bird on DTS's website and other branding for Skyline. And DTS confirmed that they're working on design and branding and once finalized. Um, they intend to feature the Manu Oku on signage, trains and their website. Uh, there was a, a mention of Bus Route one twenty one and this also came up last meeting. Um, there is a meeting, um, being coordinated by Councilmember Dos Santos Tam's office. And he intends to meet with DTS and discuss this route. A DTS responded, they will attend this meeting to answer questions and listen to community concerns. Um, it looks like they'll be attending virtually. Um, there were two items, um, assigned to DFM regarding stream cleanup and. Um, DFM is requesting additional time to respond, to investigate and respond, so I hope to have a report next month. And the last item that came up regarding continued inspection of Turo cars on Henry Street. Uh, DPP reported that multiple site investigations between July twenty fifth and July thirty first. Revealed no advertised vehicles observed being parked on the street or on the property. And they have determined that there is no violation. And that concludes my report. Um, I'll take any questions?
Are there any questions from the board for the mayor's representative, uh, Phil?
Hey, good evening, everyone. Thank you, Director Hashiro, for your, uh, the excellent follow up on some of the issues from our last meeting. And, uh, we appreciate all the efforts that the, uh, mayor's office in the city is going to address some of our concerns. Um, my question, if I could circle back to the, um, the ridership of Skyline. Um, did you mention a hundred and seventy thousand riders, uh, thus far and, um, you know, that, that is a, that is a big number. Uh, have you by any chance, uh, have any revenue figures or actual dollars that were generated from the ridership? And I only ask because, you know, that's the million dollar question is. With all the money that was taken to build the, the rail, you know, are we gonna meet some of the, the, the financial goals or? Or at least meet, you know, the targets that they're looking for to, to financially sustain the, the rail long term?
Um, I, I don't actually have any, um, revenue figures at this time, but I can follow up and report back next meeting. If they have any figures available.
Yeah, that, that would be great if they have that stuff, if they do have those figures available, because it just does give us an idea of. You know, for me to hear a hundred and seventy thousand riders in this short time, I think that's huge. Uh, and you know, if, if the finances are there and it, and it looks long term to, to be able to sustain itself, you know, maybe. For, for the general public to feel a lot better about that, uh, you know, the project. It's always had a star chase in. In, in the mouth of, uh, many of the residents all over the, the island and, uh, just, just to kind of hear some of those numbers might. You know, subdue some of that thinking. Thank, but thank you.
Thank, thank you. Uh, are there any other, uh, questions or concerns from the board? Uh, Paula? Uh, Paula, are you muted?
I wanted to know what happened to our money that was supposed to go to us at Wood Street, which is a city and county street. And I heard that it went to the skyline. Um, that was five point two million dollars. And we can't even get a light in our street. What happened to that money, the five point two million?
Well, well, that was a, that was actually a state funding. So I, I, this valid question, but, but that's actually, um, for the state unless Director Ashiro, you wanna comment, but.
So I want to know from the city, then can we have a light? Thank you.
Okay, is, is this, you mentioned the light on Wood Street, so this is a street light in a particular area of Wood Street?
Wood and Polly Highway.
Wood and Polly Highway, okay.
Yes, yes, because we're, we're really in the dark over there at six o'clock in the morning and people are gonna now. They lose the bus, they're gonna have to cross the highway six lanes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there, Paula, is there a light there now or are you asking?
No, new light installed.
We want a light and there's no light at the bus stop either.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Are there any other questions from the board? Uh, Robert, I think you were first, please, uh, Robert Cudera, please go, uh, ask, ask your question.
Uh, thank you, Chair. Uh, thank you, Kim. Uh, thank you for showing up, uh, and helping our community. I, I have a question. I'm really impressed with DFM. I asked DFM to clean some brush that was, uh, blocking, uh, twenty mile per hour. Twenty mile per hour signage. Uh, when you go up Oailimu and you crest and you start going down, you head down towards the school. Uh, when you're coming from the Pa'oua side, there's a sign there that was, uh, blocked by a brush. And there's a light on top of the sign, so when the light blinks, uh, the twenty miles per hour is in effect. Uh, so DFM did go out and they cleaned it, so you can see the sign now when you crest the hill. However, you cannot see the light until you come up upon the sign. And unfortunately, the sign says that the twenty miles per hour is not enforced, it's enforced when the light's blinking. So is it possible for me to just send the DFM another email and have them cut the tree down? It's a kind of a big tree. Um, instead of just the brush, is that something that DFM would do?
Yeah, I would suggest that you follow up and ask about the tree. Um, and see if that's something that they can, you know, further prune or, or address and. And if they have any concerns about the tree, they will consult with, um, the Division of Urban Forestry also.
Okay, okay, I, I'll, I'll do that. And again, uh, I was very impressed. I sent an email and. They sent out a work order, they gave me the work order. As soon as the crew finished the job, they sent me a, a, a notice that they finished the job. So, uh, thank you very much and if you can, please send my compliments out to DFM, then I really appreciate their responsiveness. Thank you, Kim.
Yeah, I will. Thank you.
Thank you, Robert. Uh, next up, uh, Jack James.
Uh, yes, thank you, Chair. Just a quick question on the, um, the rail, I think, uh, members soon ask about financials. Uh, all public transportation, uh, has a deficit over and above the fare box. Currently, uh, Skyline is operating at a daily deficit of over three hundred thousand dollars. But that's to be expected. It's a huge number. It shouldn't be that hard, that high, but that's every day of the week that we are. In the whole three hundred thousand dollars a day. I was in a conversation that we had at the Grassroots Institute. Uh, but it's expected to be high, just wasn't expected to be that high. Thank you so much.
Thank, thank you for your insight. Uh, Pat? Pat, here.
My question is, is when is that meeting regarding the one twenty one route?
I don't have a date, um, for that meeting, but I can find out. Or, um, Councilmember Dos Santos Tam's office, um, was coordinating. And if the representative has information, um, I think that. You could ask that, when they come up for their report?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, are there any, I, I see, uh, a couple hands up, but I. Jack James, did you have a follow up or?
I did not. It hasn't been taken down yet.
Oh, okay. Uh, are there any other comments or questions or concerns for the mayor's representative? Hearing none, uh, thank you, Director Hashiro. Thank you very much for coming out this evening.
Thank you.
Next up, we have, uh, Councilmember Tyler Dos Santos Tam. Do we have a, uh, representative from his office? I'll, I'll ask one more time, because I'm surprised. Do we have a representative from, uh, from Dos Santos Tam's office? Hearing none, we'll move on to, uh, our next, uh, one, which is Governor Green. Uh, Governor, oh, I'm sorry, Governor Green's representative, uh. Emailed me, he said he was part of the, uh, emergency response team that went to Maui, so he would be unable to attend. I, I think everyone knows. Uh, I apologize, there was a follow up, uh. And I, I, I apologize, it was off the top of my head, uh, it was directed, it was some, uh, one particular board member's question. I'll have to, I can email that out after. I apologize, I forget. I just remember that he, he had, uh, emailed earlier in the week saying he would be out. So, that, yeah, next up, we have, uh, Senator Carl Rhodes and I see Glenn here from his office, so.
Hey, Chair, um, can you folks hear me?
Yes.
Okay, um, um. Well, good evening to you folks. Um, unfortunately, Senator Rhodes. He's, um, he's at that NCSL, uh, Summit Conference in Indiana. Um, with pretty much a lot of the legislators, they're up there attending that, that summit right now. Um, he should be back, um, next week, because we have a special session for, uh, for a bunch of judges that are gonna be appointed. Um, the report, we, we forward that report to you folks and, um, it's a short report, so I'm just gonna stand on it. There's not really much to say, just the usual stuff, um, about COVID and about the, uh, the red light cameras. Um, so that's about it. So if you guys have any questions, um, I'm here to, um, see if I can respond to them.
Are there any questions from the board? Any questions from the community? Well, that, that was nice and easy. Thank you very much and, uh, give our regards to the Senator. Thank you.
Thanks, Chair.
Um, let me circle back to, uh, the governor's representative. He, he did email me and he wanted to follow up with Paula's question. He inquired with the DOT regarding concerns about the sidewalks near Country Club Road. That are not accessible for handicapped and wheelchair, uh, users and he actually had them go out and take some pictures. Uh, I think I put that on our website, but Paula, I can send, uh, follow up you, with you in more detail, the details they sent me. Okay, and, and they went out and took measurements and I think. What he says here is they need to follow up with HECO now, because there are some, uh, the poles are the big issue. Well, they're either gonna have to, uh, they're gonna have to relocate the hydrants, which is probably tough, or the light poles. But anyway, they are now aware of the issue. Thank you. I'm sorry, Paula, did, did you want to follow that up?
I just want to tell you that I did call Country Club Road myself. A man called me that takes care of everything over there. Immediately, he went out and cleaned that sidewalk. So the woman that needed it for the wheelchair could pass by there and they will watch. Where the vines are growing at Country Club and, um, Polly Highway. And he will keep it clean up to the, um, bus stop at Pulelehua. And so I'm thrilled with that because they're listening. Now, as far as the hydrants are concerned, they better get them out, because we got blind people too, so. Not only wheelchairs, but that woman at Country Club had to go in the road to go back up on the curb. And we had to stop the traffic so that she could get back up to the bus stop. So it's really important on the Polly Highway that they start doing ADA. And if you don't know, it's American Disabilities Act. Thank you.
Yeah, uh, so they sent pictures and said it's not the requisite thirty six inches from the pole to the, um. Fire hydrant, so they're gonna bring together water, uh, border water supply and the, uh, HECO. So, yeah, they're well aware of it now. It sounds like they're taking, uh, taking steps.
Anything we can do for them too, please.
Okay, thank you. But it sounds like, uh, at least that's something that, that's worked.
The man called me that this last week. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next up, I think we have a represent. Oh, thank you. I think, uh, we have a representative from Representative Jenna Takanucci's office. Is it Kelton?
Yeah, hi, how's everyone doing tonight? Um, yeah, so, uh, like Glenn mentioned, um, my boss is also at the NCSL concert, um.
I'm sorry, can you speak up just a little, please?
Sorry, is that better?
Yeah, much better. Thank you.
Okay, um, yeah, sorry, uh, the representative is at the conference. Okay, yeah, sorry. The representative is at the conference as well, like Glenn mentioned. So I'm gonna be giving our report for tonight. We have a couple of follow up issues from last month's meeting. So starting with the hurricane evacuation shelters using New Uwanu Elementary. Our office has reached out to both the city and state agencies to inquire about the plan to make New Uwanu Elementary a hurricane shelter. And as soon as we get a response, we will update the board further on those. We also have with with regards to the New Uwanu stream oversight. I wanted to update everyone involving the New Uwanu Congregational Church. I was able to confirm with Jill Easley that the inspector from DFM went out to the property and assessed the stream. We're still waiting on more information from DLNR, and I will update the board as soon as we get the that that response. Lastly, about children's crossing signs, we don't have any update at this point, but we're continuing to look into the issue. And then my boss wanted me to share that August is Library Advocacy Month here in Hawaii. The Hawaii State Public Library System is encouraging everyone to stop by your local library to check out a book and learn about what they're doing in the community. I would also like to highlight a new pilot program called the Hawaii Digital Navigators. This program helps to aid community members navigate the technology, navigate technology and teach practical skills so you can use the internet with confidence. So if you have a tech question, please give their hotline a call. I'll post that stuff, their contact information in the chat here shortly. But they're also providing in-person help at five select libraries on Oahu. The closest ones, I believe, would be the McCully Moiliili Public Library and the Kamukui Public Library. I also wanted to bring to you guys' attention that on August twenty-ninth, our office will be holding a lawmakers' listen at six P. M. Starting at six P. M., second is at five thirty at Kuananakoa Middle School Cafeteria. Some of the representative's colleagues will be joining her to help answer questions about issues that you are most concerned with. Fellow legislators, Speaker of the House Scott Seike, Majority Leader Nakamura, Chair of the Housing Committee Rep Hashimoto, and Chair of the Health and Homeless Committee Della Albalati will be in attendance, and we hope you'll be able to join us. And then lastly, I just wanted to highlight the Department of Land and Natural Resources Rapid Response Hotline for Marine Debris Removal. This includes abandoned fishing nets and fishing lines. Beach beachgoers are encouraged to immediately report hazardous nets and marine debris to the hotline or their website. And I'll also post that info into the chat. And then I'm here if anyone has any questions.
Kelton, did you say you're gonna post the location of that August twenty-ninth meeting? Can you put that in the chat or?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, I'll go ahead and do that right now.
Thank you. Paula.
What what time is that meeting?
So it starts at six P. M. And but we're encouraging people to show up at five thirty for seating and to get checked in.
Okay, thank you. And then did you hear it? Did you hear anymore about what's gonna be happening at Puiva Bridge? Have you heard anything more about what might happen at Puiva Bridge?
Is that the? Which is that? Sorry, go ahead.
Above the bridge, it's all trees and rubbish and everything in the stream.
Uh, yeah, so.
Have you heard anything more?
I I do know that I I checked in with Jill Easley, I believe it was a week or two ago, and we had an inspector from DFM go out to the property and inspect that land. So we're we've I know DFM is, you know, working on that issue. We're also put out a request to DLNR about who's has jurisdiction over the the stream and what can be done. And we're working with the church as well. So as soon as we get more information, we should be able to provide a more in-depth update.
The church is at the bottom of the stream. I'm talking about the Puiva side, which is at the top. Coming down from the mountain. So it's two different, two different areas.
I can definitely look into that.
I did refer to all the agencies, so I'm trying to figure out who's gonna do something before we have a flood. That's all. Thank you.
Yeah, definitely. I'll definitely look into that and bring that up to the representative.
It is bad. It is bad.
Thank.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions or concerns that want to be brought up at this time for Representative Takanuchi's representative? From anybody. Hearing none. Thank you very much for coming out this evening, and we appreciate your time.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Next up, do we have any other elected officials here tonight that are not specifically named on the agenda but would like to speak? Hearing none, we're ready to move on to board business. I would remind everybody that due to Sunshine Law requirements to conduct board business, I'm not sure we have a quorum, so but. We're great. Thank you. So at this time, if you can turn on your cameras, that would be great. Thank you, because a majority is required. First up on the agenda, we have, just to discuss our meeting schedule, we did postpone this decision from last month. Typically, in the past, we were required to meet nine times a year. In the the last number of years, we've we've taken off August and December. You know, due to pressing issues, we didn't take off this month, obviously, since we're here. But does anyone have a proposal of of how they wish to meet or the times they wish to meet for this session, which runs through June of next year? Paula.
I understand by watching Olelo continuously. I hear that there could be three days when we could take off. But because of the number of things going in our our area, which we usually take August and December off, that we just continue on through the year unless anybody needs what in the middle of like March or April or whatever to take off. But our board is very busy, and I'm not sure about the areas that are the other side of the mountain like Papalé and all those. But our area is busy, so I would like to see just December taken off. Thank you.
Do do we have any? Adrian, would you like to participate?
Yes, because we are busy. I would like to see us take off at least twice. March would be another good month for us to take off because that's when we have our big annual health fair and need to recover, and we're doing things with the schools. So we would like to take off, speaking on behalf of Megan and Kapanui, who are on the island of Maui helping. So we would like to 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 meet is off at least. Thank you.
Thank you. So right now, I'm hearing December, what people have said, and possibly March. Paula, did you want to follow up?
I wanted to clarify too, because I heard on Olelo, but I watch it all the time, I told you. They said three times we can take off, so.
Yeah, that is.
That's two times. That is correct now?
Right, but you you we have to, we can only take off three times. We have to meet nine months out of the year. But we've.
Right.
Opted in the past to only take off two times. So, yes, it's possible.
Okay, just so that doctor knows that. Thank you.
Yeah.
She might need one time from Papalé.
Okay, well, right, Paula, your suggestion did come up first. Does anyone want to make some motion? Or do I hear, do can we come to some sort of consensus as to when we want to take off? Is 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 March, December and March amenable to you, Paula?
Yes.
Okay.
Whatever they decide is fine with me.
Are there any objections to that?
No, someone has to make a motion, please.
Okay, so be it. Is there a motion that we recess in December and March of this term?
I will be, we we recess in December and March.
Thank you, Paula. Is there a second?
Again.
Okay, that was Reggie. Thank you. Sorry, Adrian, but we're getting to the point. Are there any objections? Hearing none, the motion approved by Acclamation, so therefore we will recess in December and March of this term. Thank you very much. Next up on the agenda is the discontinuance of bus route one twenty-one. I did ask for someone from DTS to appear at the meeting, and they agreed. Is there a representative from DTS?
Hi, Chair Smith. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
All right. Hi, Chair Smith. Hi, New Uwanu Neighborhood Board. My name is Jay Guza. I am with the Department of Transportation Services. We were asked to attend this meeting to explain why the bus route one twenty-one is being discontinued, which is being discontinued on Sunday, this Sunday, August twentieth. So the reason why Route one twenty-one is being discontinued is mainly because of low ridership. Most of the route is redundant to other more heavily used routes. But it's unique segment, which is at the top of New Uwanu, New Uwanu Poly Drive and Old Poly Road. It averages about twelve riders each weekday. Operating hours of Route one twenty-one is five A. M. to eight P. M., so it is just twelve riders per day. And on the weekends, it's it's lower than that. The busiest portion of the route is through the Lower New Uwanu and Downtown Segment, which Route four covers. And on Poly Highway, it's covered, those are, Poly Highway is covered by Routes sixty-five, sixty-six and sixty-seven. So to maximize our service delivery within our constrained budget, we decided to redistribute the service hours to address the needs of the entire bus system. We understand that we're negatively affecting the current Route one twenty-one riders, especially in the Upper New Uwanu Segment. But the ridership was just too low to warrant continuing the service. And just so everyone knows, we do conduct ongoing service reviews for all bus routes islandwide, mainly to address operating efficiency, service demand and resource allocations. To inform the public about this discontinuation, we had rider alerts posted at bus stops. We also mailed a flyer out to residents in Upper New Uwanu. It's also available on the bus website. We notified Councilmember Dos Santos Tam, the this neighborhood, New Uwanu Neighborhood Board, as well as the Chinatown Neighborhood Board. And in regards to the meeting between us and Councilmember Dos Santos Tam, I haven't heard anything, but I will be keeping an eye out for that. Also, with that, are there any questions? I'm sure there's a lot.
Yeah, I I, you know, with the board's indulgence, if there's no objection, I did, I was in communication with Pat Tiara, and she's she has something to say. So without objection, I see the council member is is here with us now. I don't know if you want to speak first, council member, or if.
Happy to. I have to let others go.
Thank you. So without objection from the board, I would like to have Pat, you know, give her input on this issue. So hearing none, Pat, please go ahead.
Okay. You are asking our senior citizens to walk down Old Poly Road and New Uwanu Poly Drive. We had a soil engineer take a look at it and found that the slope is at twenty-one point two nine percent, which is more than two and a half times the ADA maximum. Maximum, okay, maximum slope of eight point three three percent. So you're having our seniors and maybe even disabled people having to walk down a steep roadway on the roadway because there are no sidewalks. So there are no handrails or anything for them to steady themselves to walk down the the roadway. But they'll be also walking in the middle of the roadway because they have no choice. Having the buses go all the way up there and turning around and coming back down provides a safety for our seniors and for anybody who's riding the bus. I don't think, I don't believe that the officials actually walk down to see how steep it is because maybe they would have thought otherwise, because it is very steep. And if you're asking them to walk from Mama Lohua all the way down to the bus stop on Poly Highway, you're talking about a mile and a half to two miles. And also trying to cross unsignalized crosswalks. Yes, the crosswalk at Poly Highway and New Uwanu Poly Drive is signalized. However, there are no sidewalks and there's no bus stop there. The next bus stop is at Upper Dalset. But that bus stop is kind of dangerous to be at because the homeless have made a camp right over the wall. The next crossing is at Wood Street. And that's where my friend and neighbor died from his injuries after being hit by a vehicle. The next crossing is at Lower Dalset, again, not signalized. If you walk all the way down to Puiva, which is the next signalized crosswalk, that's almost two miles. And you're asking seniors and disabled people to do that. I think that you should really think about what you're asking your passengers to do. And also, I want you to compare the number, your ridership numbers from when you took the number four route away and gave it the one twenty-one, because I'm quite sure that people decided that once an hour wasn't good enough. And they all went out and bought cars because now we have parking issues in all of our neighborhoods. So that's something to think about as well. But it is a very, very steep roadway that you want our seniors and our disabled people to walk down. It's very dangerous. So and crossing the highway, that's just as bad. If in order for them to get down to Poly Highway, to cross the highway, they have to leave their houses much earlier. So take that into consideration. I realize you have numbers and bus ridership. But I think you should think about the safety of the people. Thank you.
Thank you. Mike, I see Mike's hand up. Michael.
I just want, just wanted to clarify. The slope study is actually incorrect. The altitude is measured in in feet, however, the number for the distance is probably meters. A twenty-one percent grade is outrageously steep. Realistically, Old Poly Road is on the order of five to six percent. And that comes out if you actually do the numbers correctly. But it is still very steep, relatively steep uphill downhill. It's just not outrageously steep like twenty-one percent.
Okay, thank, thank you. I guess it's nice to have a scientist on the board, but thank you. Are there any other issue or comments? I I would like to make a comment. I'm sorry. And and that is, I I would suggest that if you take this decision in isolation, I can understand where the decision to cut back on the bus service. However, I I I would suggest that there is a larger issue at stake, and that is pedestrian safety. And this really has a significant impact. This community or Poly Highway was allocated like five point two million dollars to put in traffic lights. And I know that's not a city allocation that, for whatever reason, was not implemented. But, you know, now the state has this objective of this Project Zero, or Vision Zero, I believe, to try to really cut back on pedestrian, you know, say, or safety issues. And so what I would suggest to you is, or suggest to DTS is maybe, maybe there are certain conditions where you heavily, you know, you subsidize. And I I know everything loses money anyway, but maybe go to the city council and say, hey, we have a really unique situation. We have a very old population in this area, and this is just kind of necessary. So I I would suggest that DTS really seriously consider that in in going forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah, Sylvia. Sylvia, oh, yeah, Sylvia.
I just want to put in my two cents, because I think that when they do these studies. They should also take into consideration of having a person who is disabled. To do part of that inspection with them, because they would know what is really needed and whether it works or it does not. You know, I never felt that way until I became disabled seven months ago. And now that I'm disabled, I see so much more and I understand a great deal more of what people have gone through. And I, I need to ride the bus at, at times, but I can't even walk my two blocks to get to the bus stop. So I think that that's something that DTS needs to take into consideration when they plan these things out. Or start to eliminate some of these services, because we are an aging community.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you for your comments.
Pat, uh, did you want to follow up?
I just inject something. I'm just a concerned citizen and, uh, in that. I use the bus, not every day, but occasionally, but I won't cross the street. So I have to depend on the bus going up. Catching it up to the end of the bus line and then riding it back down. And I thought, gee, the distance from when they're gonna stop the bus is about maybe, like you said, a mile, two miles. That's a short distance just to go a little further, which shouldn't affect the, um, you know, ridership. Because I really depend on catching it, but now that it's doing this, I can't walk all the way up to, uh, the church. Where the traffic lights are and to cross the street. I mean, I would have to do that because I won't cross the street, being that speeding cars, they won't stop. And, uh, killing pedestrians. Even if it's one or two person, I can count. The people that have died on this, um, highway. So I really feel that just going another two miles up. Would that be too much to ask for them to consider? To help the, um, ridership? Because we do have people. It's not like, we're important, I think, we're concerned and every person is, uh. Values their life and I'm sure you think so too, if that was your parents or your grandparents. And we want to be independent too, and we don't want to expect to catch Uber or whatever all the time. Because we really enjoy the buses too. So this is just my concern that I would like to, um, express to you that going an extra two miles. That's such a small price to pay for the bus, to having them stop. Thank you.
Thank, thank you for your input. Um, I, I will, uh, let everybody know, we did have a couple testimonials come in too, I don't know. Know if everyone had a chance to review those, but we did have, uh, from the community that were most distressed about the discontinuation of the service. Uh, I'm sorry, what, I, I think Paula, or, yeah, Paula first, please. Paula?
I just want to say that if I want to catch the bus and go down to Poly to pick up my medicines. I have to cross six lanes to go across the street to Wood Street. The other bus stop that's affected, that's coming down from Poly to the Poly on New Oahu Poly Drive. Crossing the street and that next bus stop is where the homeless are, and that's where the pigs come out. So some of our people have even been scared by pigs. So they need to walk all the way down to Wood Street, which is another how many blocks to go down. And if you're coming down and you're disabled, the road is slick and wet. And I am disabled and I need a walker and I would never attempt to try to walk in that area. Because I am disabled and I need a wheelchair when I'm going long distances. Thank you.
Thank you. Pat?
I just wanted to add that they're saying that people should take the 65, 66, and 67. However, those buses don't go or stop at Kona Nakoa Intermediate School. So if you have students going, attending Kona Nakoa Intermediate School, how are they supposed to get home? Because the number four only goes up to Wiley and that's it. It doesn't come all the way up. And nor, so it doesn't come up, so that, you know, how are these students going to get to school? There are no bus stops anywhere near Kona Nakoa Intermediate School. That is for the 65, 66, and 67. So you've actually just cut them off completely.
Thank, thank you. Are, are there any, uh, before we hear from the council member, are there any last comments? Council member, do you want to chime in? Do you have any thoughts that you'd like to share?
Sure. Well, you know, the number four bus, uh, was begun 50 years ago and had service here. It's an area that's had transit for a long time. Um, I spoke with, uh, the Deputy Director of DTS, John Nauichi, um, about this and expressed, you know, concerns that cutting off this area. With fairly low ridership, I will say, I mean, this is, you know, those are the numbers that they came up with. Does inconvenience people and there are a lot of caregivers that, you know, use this from time to time and other folks that do. So, you know, I, I'm opposed to them cutting the service. So let me, let me make that clear. Oh, I do want to also make the point though, that there are a few other considerations that we, that if the board is gonna pass a resolution or do this since we represent New Oahu. If the number four is going to be extended from its current terminus on Wiley Street to take that older route. And that bus takes an additional 10 to 15 minutes to do the turnaround. That bus is going to be 10 to 15 minutes behind on its schedule coming back down New Oahu. And so that means potentially we have to put in another bus onto the number four routing to make up for that time. And so there are additional concerns and I wish the DTS representative, and maybe they can talk a little bit more about, you know, if we advocate for continued number four service like it was before to go up there, um, or maintaining the number 121. Um, there are additional effects, so I want to make sure that everyone's aware of those, um, as we kind of talk about how best to solve this issue. So it's not fully in a vacuum. Um, there are also costs and obviously running a fairly empty bus costs money. I think there are probably some options that, you know, we can advocate for, whether it's a smaller, you know, bus. But a lot of that's going to be in the next fiscal year, so I want to also make that clear, so we're not, um. So we don't have an expectation that this is, uh, something that's gonna happen overnight. But, um, I'm going to keep on talking with DTS about this and seeing what options are available to make sure that this area continues to be serviced. You know, they did make that decision to cut the 121, but again, it's not. You know, I don't think that they've looked at all the possible options, so I'm going to keep on pushing for other alternatives to be looked at. When they did make the change to the 121 a few years ago, um, you know, I think we can look at some of that data. And to the point that Pat made, that when people, when they changed the 121, people said, forget it, it's not worth changing. Um, I think we can also look at that and, and see if we were to restore number four service. And maybe it's just in the morning and afternoon to catch the people going to appointments or rush hour time. Um, maybe that's the solution, right? At least you're not fully isolated. At least you can take the bus to go to the doctor. Go have lunch and then come back, you know, in the early afternoon, so it's not. You know, so we're not running an empty bus every half hour that's fairly expensive. I mean, there's, there's got to be some solution here. And I'm going to keep working with them to figure that out.
Thank you. Mr. Guza, did you, if I said that, I hope I said that properly. Uh, did you have any last comments or? From DTS?
So I just wanted to thank everybody for their comments, uh, very valid concerns. Uh, we will take all these comments, I've been taking notes this whole time. I'll take it back to the office, have some discussions, uh, with my branch, with my supervisors. Uh, and we'll, we'll see what we can do to kind of help mitigate these, these concerns that all of you have.
Thank, thank you very much. Thank you for coming out this evening.
Can I make, uh, can I ask one question? Uh, this is Kerry Komatsabaros.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't see you earlier. Go ahead, please.
Okay, uh, I guess the concern I have is, um, why is this done on such short notice? Um, and without discussion with the community? You know, uh, I understand that, you know, maybe if the ridership is down, changes have to be made. But even if changes have to be made, they have to be made properly. And product properly is with notice and with discussion with the community. And, uh, I, I didn't see this happen. And for example, when I got the flyer, I called DTS. And DTS, uh, was not aware that, uh, many of the people who depend on the 121. You know, do not have the Kailua buses and the number four bus as an option. You know, so, and it's not just Kona Nakoa, uh, middle school kids that catch the bus. It's also kids from the Sikh schools, also kids from the Honpa Hongongi school. And I don't think, and I, that's one of my questions, has DTS reached out to the school principals? To ask whether they're impacted or not, uh, because when I asked, they did not, and maybe they did after that, I, I, I don't know. Uh, but that's my question, why, why the rush? Um, you know, why make the change and then after you make the change, you have the discussion? Uh, that kind of just doesn't make sense to me. So, uh, that's, um, that's my two cents.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, so we did, I'm not sure when you spoke with, uh, somebody from DTS, but, uh, we did reach out to, see I have a list of I think Sikhs Charter School, Kona Nakoa, um, Honpa Hongongi, New Oahu Elementary. Queen Emma Preschool and Jump Start Preschool. So, uh, this, this might have happened after your conversation with, uh, somebody from DTS. Uh, but we, we did reach out to those, uh, those schools there.
Okay, and, and what was your comment?
Um, I am not sure. I would have to go back to the office and check. Um, there was, it was emails sent and I believe, um, it might have been some phone conversations too. Um, I, I wasn't the one personally sending those emails or making those phone calls, but, um, I'll have to go back to the office and check on those.
Okay, and, and I guess, I guess my point is, I understand, you know, you, you have to look at ridership and whatnot, but, um. You know, uh, I think somebody mentioned earlier that, you know, all forms of mass transit do not rely upon 100% upon the fare box. And that's kind of understood. Which means in essence, all of mass transit is partially funded by, uh, real property taxes. So, you know, regardless of ridership, I think some form of, uh, bus coverage in all parts of the island is, is necessary. And to me, the question becomes, okay, if ridership is down, um, how do you modify the bus, uh, arrangements so that you have some coverage? Because we're all paying for it, no matter what, you know? Um, and whether it's, um, limited time buses, limited routes, uh, that'd be fine. But again, my whole point is, why is the discussion happening after you terminate the route? That's my question. Yeah, it just doesn't sound right.
Okay, that, that's a very fair question. Mr. Guza, do you want to address that?
Yeah, so, uh, that, that is a fair question. Um, we definitely could have done a better job with the public outreach on this. I feel we can always do a better job on public outreach in general, but, uh, in this case in particular. Uh, yes, we should have started sooner. Um, so I apologize for, I guess, the, the late notice for this discontinuation.
Yeah, well, be, let, let me follow up.
Okay, very, very quickly, please, sir.
Yep, because as soon as I received that letter, I called DTS the next, uh, week. And, um, and expressed my opinions and sent email, I followed up with the next week. And, uh, the person told me they checked their superiors and the decision that is made, they're gonna do it. So, um, um, that, that's my real complaint here.
Yeah, I, I hope there's an opportunity for, uh, to review this dissection, I guess, is really what we all really want in light of the community concerns and I think other, other things than just the number of bus riders.
So, yeah, yeah, I, I understand, but it's, you know, it seems like there's a series of things happening nowadays where things happen without a hearing, without notice. Just feeling that people don't care.
Okay, thank you. Paula, did you have something you want? Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Guza.
Sorry, just really quickly, um, again, we, we will be looking at this again. I'm going to take all of your comments uh, back to the office and have discussions, uh, within our office internally and with all the transit services as well. Uh, we'll, we'll see what we can do to, to help.
Thank you. Paula, did you want to add something?
Yes, two things. One, there are caregivers going up there to take care of people that are like 90 years old. They go every day to take care of a woman in, uh, in bed and two other people. Number, number two is that when we have to cross the highway over here. We're crossing six lanes and they forget about us, but not everyone in this neighborhood was notified. Only the ones closest to the Poly Highway. What about the ones in the mountain that walk down regularly to get to work? And I'm not sure when they did the survey, but it could have been when it was COVID. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, council member, do you want to have any last comments?
Yeah, I, I think in closing, no, this. This decision obviously is one that we're going to keep on working on. I think in the bigger picture, there's a lot of public input throughout the, you know, years that go into these route planning. There's something called the Short Term Transit Plan. The Oahu MPO also has discussions about levels of bus service and kind of the expectations around that. And so what we'll do is at the next meeting, and I'll work with Lisa on this, is we'll come back with some of the, some of the areas where we can have some more public input so that this doesn't happen again in a vacuum. I mean, we make sure that the New Oahu community has its voice heard at all of these levels, right? I think that's something that's really important.
Okay, well, thank you. Uh, Pat, I'm gonna have to, I'm sorry, um, cut the discussion off, but, uh. Council member, we appreciate you coming out and, um, sharing with us at this time. Mr. Guza, thank you very much. We appreciate DTS coming out and at least hearing our concerns. We hope that you do take them back and, and, and seriously consider what we've offered here tonight, and we thank you.
Thank you for having me.
Okay, thank you. You know, if, if I could circle back, council member, I would, because you weren't here during your report, can I, um, ask one, uh, question? And that is, uh, you know, we had complete streets going on and, and that was quite a lengthy process. And my understanding is the complete streets implementation on New Oahu was delayed. As you may be aware, that road was temporarily paved in certain portions and they paved over a crosswalk about where Bates Street is.
Yes.
The White Baptist Academy. And i- it's actually been a number of years. We were promised that, uh, they couldn't put it in because it violated federal, uh, standards. But, uh, that was going to be addressed and we're, we're still waiting. Obviously, this isn't a go out and rush and find out tomorrow, but that, that is a concern that I would like to reiterate from our board.
No, absolutely. Um, and that's something that, uh, Leana Ben, she brings up, um, Brandon from my staff walks with their neighborhood security watch on a regular basis. You're right that there are, uh, federal funding issues with crosswalks without a median island. Now, that being said, going back to the bigger question about the New Oahu Complete Streets. Um, I know that this was something that was a little bit controversial, uh, the, the full plan, right? All the bells and whistles. So what I've been doing in talking with Renee from DTS is saying, okay, well, you know, some of this stuff is controversial, right? They would have taken away parking in some areas, added a stall or two somewhere. They would have taken away parking in some areas, added a stall or two somewhere else. But things that are fairly uncontroversial, can we at least start with those, right? And one of those is the Bates Street Crossing. So we're trying to find a way where we can do the median island to satisfy the federal funding requirement. And maybe that means, you know, speaking of bus stops, maybe moving that lower bus stop so there's more room for cars to move through that area and still have the island. So that's something that's on our list. We did get money in the last budget for other sidewalk improvements or crosswalk improvements in the area. And so maybe with some of that funding, we can dedicate that to, to doing continued work there. So it's not something we've forgotten and we will be working on that.
Thank you very much. Sorry to the board for bringing that up at this moment, but you know, it, it wasn't allowed before. So did anyone want to just add anything really quickly since I brought it up? I, I didn't want to, Mason, cheat anyone else of an opportunity to weigh in. Mason?
Yeah, if, what? What, what, what can you do at putting smaller buses on the route? If ridership is low, put smaller buses. Maybe you can change some of the times, but I don't suggest eliminating. You're cutting transportation for a lot of people up there. So if you get smaller ones, and we do have smaller ones, you know, so it's not like, oh, we only have one size. You got, you know, couple of sizes. We have one up here on the Pacific Heights Road that's small. You know, that's something to think about too.
Thank you.
Yeah, can I, this is Kerry again. Can I add that this, actually?
Very briefly, please.
I, I think during the weekends, they do have smaller buses come up here. So you're right, it's, it's within their inventory to do this. But again, about the shortness of time of the notice, when I called them, they didn't even know.
Okay, well, I, I'm, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Yeah, we've had that point made, so I, I'm.
No, no, you get it. But anyway, I'll, I'll get my piece later on.
Okay.
And that's my problem. You see, that's, this is what happens when you don't have enough notice. You don't have enough time to discuss it.
No, I agree with your, the lack of notice, that, that, that's an enormous problem. And that's, I agree. And anyway, are there any last thoughts on this issue before we move on? Thank you very much, everybody. Okay, next up on the agenda is we have a feral pig infestation. I will let you know, Pacific Heights had this problem. It's, it's sort of abated. But I did want to make everyone aware, I don't know if everyone saw this, for parrot, feral pig problems, if you see them, please call DLNR. And do not call the police department to handle pigs. That was their request. And I have contact information for DLNR on our NB12 website. So if anyone needs that, or you can just go to the state site and look for the island contact. Anyone, does anyone want to add any comments about the feral pigs?
Yes, I do, Patrick. This is Audrey.
Yes, Audrey, please go ahead.
People on Henry Street have been calling DLNR. They refer them to the Pig Hunters Association. And I, I don't think that's a good thing to do to push it on the Pig Hunters Association. So anyway, I think DLNR needs to take the bull by the horns and kind of do their work, please. Thank you.
Well, I, I will let you know that I, I did talk with, well, I emailed with Senator Rhodes and asked him, I don't want to throw him under the bus, but I did ask him about changing some of the policy at DLNR, making it a little bit easier for the pig hunters. Because apparently that might be a problem that would help. And even though the, the problem's kind of abated at this moment, it's obviously gonna be something that comes up again and again. So you know, DLNR needs to kind of start having an action plan. So anyway, Paula, did you want to add something?
I just want to add that at the top of Laime, which Audrey is speaking of, the ones that came down into the valley were scary. But number two, we wanted to let the children know in New Wano School, if they see them along Henry Street, because they seem to be going on down toward the Baptist Academy and down to the stream. So if you're getting them up in specific, Pacific Heights, that means they are following that trail all along there. And they want to put in humane, humane cages and not just be shooting in the area. We cannot have shooting or you can use bow and arrow if you're good, but no shooting in the area because that's against the law. Do the humane thing to do.
I will add, Councilmember Tyler De Santos, oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Tyler De Santos Tam helped, office helped out our area, Pacific Heights, in coordinating with the Pig Hunters Association and they don't use rifles. So I don't know if I would call it humane, but they don't use rifles. And they do use the cages and they've been very effective, the pig hunters have. So thank you. Thank you, Councilmember.
Bow and arrow unless they steal the cages. Unless they steal the cages, it's bow and arrow only in New Wano.
Thank you. I see Lisa Leonardo has her hand up. So would you like to comment?
Hi, this is Lisa Leonardo from Councilmember De Santos Tam's office. I just wanted to comment from Brandon in our office, the things that he's been working on for the feral pigs. He's been working with Pacific Heights Community Association and Stanford Masui. And he's been able to arrange a connection between Border Water Supply and the Pig Hunters Association to be able to grant them access onto Border Water Supply land to trap and hunt the pigs. They're trying to gain access in these areas to find maybe the source or resting locations or breeding areas where the pigs are and hoping that they can move them further away from not coming closer to the Pacific Heights residences. They're also trying to facilitate a meeting with Pacific Heights Communication Association, Stanford Masui, Pig Hunters Association and Hawaii Baptist Academy to try and get access on their lands. The HBA president is definitely open to discussion. So that's currently what we're working on in our office for the feral pigs right now.
Thank you. And it's, I can tell you from Stanford, talking with Stanford, Pacific Heights, it's been very successful. So thank you for your office and, and the council member. That's, that's worked out very well. So are there any last comments regarding the pigs? Hearing none, we can move on to our next order of business. Now, there's a presentation by Jack James.
Aloha Chair, aloha Chair Smith and Board members. Thank you for rolling me over from July to, to August. I appreciate that. I'm gonna try to be brief because I don't know what the board may have an interest in about recall. But I'll, I'll try to go over it in generally and if you have, and I'll save enough time for Q and A. Because of the, under the city charter, you do not have to have a why to recall a city council member. That might sound strange, but you don't have to have a why. What got us energized was the sixty-four percent pay raise. We have found out since that we have other whys which are gonna come out over the next twelve and a half months. It's gonna be a fourteen month process for all seven council members. The budget's a quarter of a million dollars right now and actually rising a little bit. The, so I wanna, I just want to explain that what we're actually going to be doing, you have to collect ten percent of registered voters the last time there was an election in a district to be able to recall someone. Those signatures have to be what signatures and what dates? And they have to be collected within a sixty day period. That is our responsibility to do and we turn that over to the city clerk. I'll come right back to that. The, the charter allows us to impeach or recall. Impeachment is problematic because you go to a court. Recall is matter of fact. You get ten percent, there is a recall of that council member. The council member has a, a response to that that they can do. But the fact is, the council member is recalled at that point in time. An interesting rule of recall is that you can only recall someone in their second and third year of their four-year term. You can't recall someone in the first year or the fourth year of their term. And actually, when you look at the economics of it, that's a good provision. I, I support that. So we can only recall of the seven that we're going to recall, we have to either, and I've said all along from day one, we're going to recall or going to go to primary election. There's three council members that have to be recalled in 2023 and four that will be recalled in 2024. We, we know about the four in 2024 will be recalled. And we're gonna be making the decision in early September as to who, if any, will be recalled in 2023. We do believe there'll be one council member that will be recalled in 2023. And we'll, I'll be back to the board in September and talk about that. So we have already gathered up how many signatures is required for all seven. We know what that number is and we've been collecting signature, not signatures. We've been collecting people who will sign the petition since the first week of July and it's been a very aggressive period of time. And we're appreciative of the, the voters in the district that have, have reached out to us. Once we present to city clerk the petition of the ten percent of the voters, city clerk has twenty days to check the, and verify our information. Is the signature right? Is the address right? Is the person a voter? All of that. We're actually working off of the city's voter registration file. So we're starting at a very good point. So our information ought to be good. And the difference between recalling somebody now and recalling somebody twenty-five years ago is technology. Technology allows us to do this process one heck of a lot faster. So we have that as a positive for us. City clerk has twenty days. If the clerk determines that our petition is valid, he will pick up the phone and call the council member and advise the council member that they've been recalled and they have ten days to vacate the office. That's the, the rule of it. It happens that simple. The council member does have a right at that point to call for a recall election. And that means that if the council member calls for a recall election, the city clerk sends a ballot out to the entire registration of the district. And the council member, and the simple one question, do you support the recall of this council member or not? And the response is yes or no. Whoever wins that has to win by a simple majority. So there is one step after actually recalling a, a council member. Once you are re, and the final step to recall is once you're recalled by the electorate, you can no longer run for the office for two years or you can't be an appointed person for two years in the city and county. If you wanted to stay in public service, you'd have to move across the street to the, to the state, but you cannot work within the Honolulu City and Council arena after you've been recalled for a period of two years. That's the rules that we're living by and we're working by. A little after Labor Day, we're, right now, we're working as a unit in all seven areas. A little after, by September fifteenth, our social media will be up by then. It's gonna be very robust. And we will break out into seven individual teams. And we will be at each one of your committee members, committee meetings in case you have questions. You're gonna see us, you're gonna receive information from us, you're gonna receive mail. You're gonna know what we're doing. And if you have questions, you can always get ahold of me. I'll be at your meeting monthly to answer any questions you have. I know this was quick, but I didn't want to take up a lot of your time. But if anybody has a question, I'm happy to respond right now.
Thank, thank you, Jack. Are there any questions from the board? Are there any questions from the community? Actually, I have to say, I do have a question. And what is the cost of a recall, like for the city? Like, let's say for, I, I know, I guess if you do a number at one time, it may be less because maybe there's economies of scale or, but do you have a ballpark or?
I, I do not. These are all functions, as, as it's been explained to me by the city clerk, they're functions that they're required to do anyway. It's not exceptional. Now, if you, if, if a council member, once they've been recalled, decides they want to have a recall election, then that is an additional cost that will be incurred by the city for that individual election. So that's one cost that would be over, it's, it's a responsibility that would be one thing over and above their budget.
Well, I, the way you explained it, unless I misunderstood, if there's a recall, then the, the seat would be vacant. There'd have to be another election, right? Or could there be an appointment instead?
Well, just, it depends on when it happens. Both of those are correct, but it depends on when it happens as to whether it's an appointment or there's an election. It's the best I can answer that, okay? It just depends on the calendar.
Right, okay. Philip, do you have a question?
I, I just have a quick question. I noticed when you're explaining, thank you for the thorough explanation. When you say we and our, who's we? Is it just the community in general or is it a group or?
I apologize. It is a group. We've put together a group of sixty-two people that are on our leadership team. And that's my we. We're actually a little bigger than that because we add our data team to that. But we have active members in all seven districts. So that's from, I, for my oratory, that's we, okay? And we have a lot of support in the community. This, this sixty-four percent pay increase really riled up a lot of people. Some people referred to it as a straw on the camel's back, but it did rile people up like I've never seen in thirty-eight years. I would like to mention one other thing. This past August ninth, just a few days ago, Councilmember Okimoto introduced Bill twenty-three, one ninety-three, I think it is. It, it, it's amazing. It's like pouring fuel on the fire, guys. She is now asking that the city council approves a resolution to actually remove the city council from having any vote or any discussion about any future pay raise. It's absolutely unbelievable to me that, that a city council person would do that and they know there's an imminent recall. You know, that's, that's given me another item to talk about for twelve months, okay? It's, it's unbelievable that, that, that has happened. And, and this points to the arrogance that is imparted on that council. So, yeah, I could not believe it when I received, I received it within an hour of her filing it and I, I could not believe it. We wouldn't have a chance to talk. Yeah.
Thank you. If I could just relay one concern and, and I hope, it sounds like there's gonna be a lot of money spent on your part, your organization. So I, I hope that, that you pledge to be transparent with your donations and, you know, all that and not make this kind of dark money type of si- situation. Have you thought about that or are there any plans to?
We have, we're going, we will, we will abide by the law one hundred percent.
Well, unfortunately, the law sometimes has some shortcomings. That, that's the problem. I, I, I'm not, you know, if you're not sure, but I would ask that you seriously consider that.
Here's one of the things that's difficult with that, and I'll just be upfront with you. There's people that want to support us that do not want their support to be public.
Well, that, that's fair.
Okay, so I'm telling you, I'm faced with that every day. Hey, Jack, I'm gonna write you a check, but I don't want anybody to ever know it, okay? And so I hear that every day. Some people don't care. Some people do. So I am faced with that on my side. There's people that want to contribute and be a part of it, but they're afraid. They, they tell me, Jack, we have retribution in this community and we don't want to have retribution.
Okay, thank you.
And I'm just being blunt with you there, okay?
No, I, I appreciate that. Are, are there any other questions from anybody? Mr. James, thank you very much for coming out this evening.
My pleasure.
Your time. I will, I will let everyone know, there, there was a, a resolution from another board regarding the, the increase, the pay increase. And it was sort of a generic resolution. I put that on our, our website. I don't know if people actually go and look at our website, but it was there if, if anyone's interested, so. Hearing nothing, does anyone have anything further on the issue? Hearing nothing, we'll move on. Thank you very much. Next up on the agenda, we have our Papukalaya community concerns and I, I think just current events. So Dr. Dillard?
Okay, thank you very much. First, I want to start off by saying mahalo to Councilman De Santos Tam for coming out this weekend to help with Papukalaya Drive for Maui. We did a drive Saturday and Sunday and he was gracious enough to come out and help us set up and to join us in that. So, thank you. I see you're still here. On Sunday, we were able to ship off eight pallets of. thank you. I see you're still here. On um, Sunday, we were able to ship off eight pallets of needed supplies. And on Monday, we had an additional 19 pallets to go. And when we got to uh, Lohai Air, they had stocked shipments. And because we had collected much more than we thought that was gonna go to uh, Hoi No Kaila Pono, uh, things that they requested that they needed. Uh, it was decided Monday morning that we would send a team over to receive our shipments as to not to burden uh, the staff of community health workers in Maui even more. So Monday afternoon, I sent five of my staff over, Kalapuni, Megan, and three more volunteers over to receive our shipment as well as help distribute things. So they're off island in Maui until Thursday. So they regretfully could not make this meeting. Additionally, we've started um, working with the principals on um, our, our grant. And so we're meeting with each one now to see how we can provide the resources that they need. I met with Stevenson and now we're uh, knowing that they're needing help with transportation and different things. So as well as the Lincoln School Principal is retiring at the end of the month. So we're looking at uh, supporting them uh, the vice principal until they get a replacement because school has begun. We will be starting after school programs in community um, in September. I had new staff start yesterday in all of the chaos. So we're quite busy doing things as well as getting ready for community engagement around the Kapua Supportive Living Environment uh, Center on Waikiki. That's what's going on in Papakalea this week.
Thank you. Well, well, we certainly miss uh, Megan and Kalapuni, but if there are any reasons to miss a board meeting, that's, that's the, I can't think of a better one. So please give them, I, I'm sure I can speak for the board and please give them our uh, our best wishes and uh, thanks for doing, doing a wonderful, wonderful work. So very, very well needed and thank you for your, your efforts and your community efforts too. Cause obviously they sound like you did a great job. So thank you. Are there any questions regarding from anybody? Thank you. Thank you, Adrian. Uh, next up, we have uh, just our approval of the July 18 minutes. Are, is, are there any corrections to the minutes? Hearing none, uh?
Patrick, Patrick, I got corrections.
Okay, I'm sorry, Audrey, please. Yeah, no, no problem.
Um, the first line, um, what do you call it? It says quorum not established with 12 members present. It should be, the quorum was established, right?
I think you're right.
Okay, and on the last page, thank you, Mr. Maguay. Uh, last page with the bridge at Puyiva on page five. On the second sentence at the end, it says uh, there was a Y and a stream. I think they meant A U W A I.
Okina, there's an okina. Okay, put the okina. Uh, that's all I got, Patrick. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, I'm, I'm sorry. I think I saw a hand, another person's hand. Uh, were there any other corrections? Well, given that we have corrections, can I hear a motion to approve the minutes as corrected? Or as proposed to be corrected? I, I'm sorry, I didn't get who made the motion. Is that Mike?
Yeah, it was me and somebody else.
And then who's second? Just raise your hand. I can see you. Cause, all right, Adrian, thank you very much. All, all those uh, in favor of adopting the minutes as corrected, please say yay.
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 All those opposed, say no. Anyone that wishes to abstain, say present. So the, the minutes happen.
I abstain.
Okay, well, please note, uh, Zidell, we have one abstention. Thank you. Uh, that concludes our business portion of the meeting. Or is there any other business that uh, we didn't cover that we should have? That we're allowed to?
Are we gonna take a, are we gonna take a break, being that we had a meeting in August?
Didn't we uh, pass the motion to uh, break in December and March? I believe that was.
December and March. Okay, March of next year though. Okay, thank you.
It is technically next year, but you know, our session, you know, it goes from July to June. So.
Thank you.
So we gotta keep working hard until we get our Christmas break. So uh, okay, so next up, we have our announcements. Um, the next, I will let you know that the, uh, well, it's on the minutes. It says the, we are broadcasted on Olelo. I guess the first Thursday of the month at 6:00 PM. Um, I will let you know, the department, I'm trying to remember, but it's on the website, the Department of Emergency Preparedness, I believe. I, I, that's the wrong name, but it has a guide for hurricane preparedness and many other types of emergency situations. So it's a very, very good resource for you and for your neighbors, if you want to let them know about it. Uh, also, please remember, we have required paperwork. Um, Zidell, did you want to go through that real quick?
Um, I'll email them individually for those people that actually um, need to turn in. But everybody's actually sworn in, so everybody will not, you'll, you'll not have anybody, you know, um,
Get kicked off.
Yeah, kicked off.
Um, do, do remember that we have to do our Sunshine Law Training and, and it's kind of humbugged, but it, it's, it's necessary. So please remember to do that. Uh, are there any other, well, I guess I'll, I'll just go ahead and say the next meeting will be September 19th on Tuesday of next month. Yes, sir, any?
Uh, just a request, could you put the Olelo uh, channel in time on the uh, the agenda?
Yeah, I, I, I will do, we'll do that. And also, we'll add on, you get, on the Google Drive. So the public can actually access it as well.
Forty-nine, forty-nine.
Um, so, you know, this is sort of, I mean, not really, uh, uh, I, I just want to ask, you know, I, I've been putting together that website, but I don't know if really it's that utilized. We can actually just jump to and use the Google Drive now that uh, the Neighborhood Commission has set that up. And everyone can just go down, go there and download all the meeting documents at one time, if that's sufficient for everybody. If not, you can let me know, but I think that's a good resource. So are there any other announcements? Thank you, everybody. Thank you, everybody. This was a great meeting and uh, we actually did very well in time. So thanks, everybody. Have a great evening and I'll see you all uh, next month. Thank you. I call the meeting adjourned, by the way.